I'd like to ask Commissioner Langston to lead us in the pledge, and then I'll ask our prayer for us.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What I'd like for us to do today is, if you so desire, bow your head in silent prayer for change and healing in our country. So let us pray. Amen. And we'll call the regular meeting of the City Commission to order this morning. And our consent agenda is, we've got some swing in of our newly elected commissioners. So you guys would like to come forward. We got Judge here with us. And we look forward to you guys getting sworn in and have two more good years with us. So Judge, would you like to go first, sir?
I'd be glad to.
All right.
I, Scott Hoffman, do solemnly swear.
I, Scott Hoffman, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution and the government of the United States.
The state of Florida and Gulf County, Florida.
The state of Florida and Gulf County, Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I'm duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of Commissioner of the City of Fort St. Joe.
The duties of the officer of the Commissioner of Fort St. Joe.
Upon which I'm now about to enter.
Unto which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Mr. Lowry.
Mona.
Got a helper today. Outstanding. You like that?
Good.
My wife, or my daughter, Brooklyn, my wife.
Thank y'all for being here today. Stand by your mom and place your hand on the Bible, please. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Brett Lowry, do solemnly swear.
I, Brett Lowry, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The state of Florida.
The state of Florida.
And Gulf County, Florida.
And Gulf County, Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I'm duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Commissioner for the City of Fort St. Joe.
Of the office of Commissioner of Fort St. Joe.
Upon which I'm now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Always take care of us. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. It's good to see you.
Yeah. You guys, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Two more good years. Okay, next item on the consent agenda is minutes of a regular meeting of Jim Sack. Everybody's had a chance to look over those. If there's no corrections or additions, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
To approve.
Motion by Commissioner Langston. Second by Commissioner Hoffman. Approve the minutes of Jim Sack. All in favor, I?
I.
Same sign, motion passed, five of... Oh, key note. Mr. City Attorney, how many for today?
I actually don't have anything specific for you guys today, but if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for our attorney?
Did you ever get a reply back from the county attorney?
No, I have not. I bumped into him a couple different places, and he promises to get back to me, but he does not. I have, as far as on that issue, I did get a response back from St. Joe Company, thinking about it.
Thank you.
I did get a response from the insurance provider that we did have $2,600 that we received from insurance on that particular building that we would have to return if we don't have ownership. And cancel the insurance company.
$2,600?
$2,600. It was about $20,000 in damage, but after depreciation deductibles, it ended up being $26 on that building. On the other piece of property with the Comfactor, the Comfactor building, we received about $160,000. But that's okay because we do have clear ownership.
And that deed has been returned.
Yes, sir. I have.
Mr. Mayor, my question.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I've heard from the county, from Mr. Hammond, was that we could lease it as we have done in the past to...
What if we decide we don't want to do that? Do they want to buy back from us?
I don't know. I was basically told it was ours. We could lease it, just like we have in the past. So I don't know if a letter might be...
Yeah, I think a letter from them would be an order for us to have a starting point anyway, but...
What if we made a...
How much work we're gonna have to do to get it ready, and do we want to spend money to do that? Uh, that's...
From a FEMA and insurance standpoint, they want clarity on who owns the issue. I don't think FEMA is concerned about the fact that, I mean, we operate the building, we own the building, but FEMA wants to have some answer, so does insurance, as to who owns it.
It's pretty clear who owns what. We own 3.2 acres, and they own 1.2. That's clear. They have a deed for the 1.2.
And then the question is going forward, are we going to take over ownership of the 1.2, or is it gonna remain in the county? We need to give them clear definitions so we know how to move forward with insurance.
I think maybe I should just go ahead and formally write the county a letter and just ask, what do you guys want to do? What is your plans? Make something official.
They just need it to us. I mean, if they want to do that.
Or maybe even what are our plans, too, you know?
Well, our plan, if we don't operate it as a transfer, we have to offer it back to the St. Joe Company. If they don't want it, then we have to offer it back to the county. If they don't want it, then we can do whatever we want.
That's our 3.2.
That's just the 3.2.
Yeah, 1.5, and we don't own.
Don't own.
Okay. But yeah, I think I would be fine with you, everybody else will be fine with writing letters to the county explaining our position, find out what they'd like.
Just basically asking what you guys want to do.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for the attorney? Okay, Jim, on your whole business?
Yes, sir. The first item we have is in reference to the COVID-19 update. We officially have opened up everything from the city's standpoint to a limited capacity except for some recreation programs. At our last meeting, we did have a discussion with Ms. Kim Ladeen from the Air Force Board and representatives from the Stack House to try to come up with a protocol and sanitation plan for each of the programs. So that's where we're at today, to consider whether we're gonna open up these two programs for some...
Yeah, we've got representatives from the Health Department here. Sarah, if you and Brittany would like to come forward, I've, you know, got a little discussion, little soapbox I'd like to stand up on anyway while we're on this. I'm real concerned that we're not doing what we need to do in the city. You don't see masks anywhere. You go, yeah, there's two masks. I'm standing corrected. But I think we need to do a whole lot better, and especially we need to set an example for our visitors coming in. They see us with no mask, they don't feel like they've gotta wear a mask. Our restaurants, waitstaff, they're not wearing masks. I got an email today, matter of fact, from a lady passing through town. She spent all her summers down here at the beach. She loved Iowa. Coming back from the storm, everything looks good. But she went to eat lunch, and now the waitstaff at the restaurant wearing masks. She was concerned about that as I am. Even, I mean, this commission could, if we wanted to, make a motion that that everybody in the city limits to Fort St. Joe, when they're out in the public, have to wear a mask. I don't think we really want to do that, but our cases are coming up. We've got two more this morning. And I think I'd love to see people be a little more responsible for themselves, their neighbors, their family, folks who are older like me. And so that's my soapbox for this morning. But let's think about that and try to encourage folks to, where are you at? You go out in public, go inside, you go in the big dollar store, wherever. Where are you at? And if you see folks in there, you know, they're hot. Ask them why. And we've got to take it seriously. And I don't think we have been lately. We're advertised as a safe place to come, but now everybody's coming and bringing their problem with them. So anyway, Mr. Lowry, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thanks. Hello, Commissioner. My name's Sarah Heinz. I'm the Administrator for the Board of Health in Franklin and Gulf. Just on the mask needs, you know, we don't have the authority to enforce the mask. But, you know, we are still promoting social distancing and need to slow the spread of the virus, and we still promote the use of cloth masks in places difficult to maintain social distancing. So for cloth masks in particular, with Gulf County, the Health Department, through the Board of Health, has distributed over 20,000 masks to Gulf County residents and the same amount to Franklin County. So hopefully this will help to reduce exposure to the virus. But yes, we do recommend that, use a mask in places that are difficult to maintain social distancing. So thank you for mentioning that this morning. I just wanted to give some quick updates. So I'm Sarah Heinz, but let me let Brittany introduce herself and maybe your new credentials. How about that?
My name is Brittany Gosham. I've been in the Health Department for about 12 years, give or take a little bit on off. Recently graduated a Family Nurse Technician Program and will be board of the Health Department as their provider. Previous provider. Have a huge accomplishment. So thank you. And she's been the person that we've been leading on from that medical expert, subject matter expert advisor. She's been so tremendous to work on through this pandemic. You know, we're all in this together. So, and as we all know, you know, June 5th, the state moved into phase two of Florida's reopening plan. Phase two, there's still several phases to get through, so it is important to follow the details. The state will continue to update the COVID-19 dashboard daily with the number of tests and the number of positives. So you brought, we have two more positives today. Both of them were travel related. One individual was a Gulf County resident who traveled out of the state. And the other individual was a non-Gulf County resident who traveled into the state, tested positive, left our county, but we still have that counted on our case total. So that's the situation. And we'll continue to send out press releases and work closely with him, with the state, to make sure that the public is aware. So special thanks to Mr. Hoffman in the audience today. He's been really great to help us continue to message important information that we need to go out timely. You know, each month, we're going to continue to test 2% of the population as part of the state's reopening strategy. Healthcare partners are continuing to provide testing. We have set up testing locations and our tents. Marshall let us use their FEMA trailer. That is nice. We have our own trailer that we're trying to renovate right now. But we do make it visible so that people know that you can come get tested with a new swab. Then off the lap, it takes two to five days. Easy drive-through concept. And then we also have testing available at our Health Department. So you just call by appointment, and we'll actually meet you out. Call per by service. We'll meet you out in your car. You call ahead because it is by appointment, and we take your information over the phone, and then we go out and do the testing that way. Super quick, simple process. The testing day, correct me if I'm wrong, Tuesday through Thursday, 1:30 to 3:30? 8:30 to 10:30. I'm sorry. I just left the Franklin Commission meeting. So just call it, 227-1276, and we'll make sure that you can use it out. Would like to get tested? We want to make that available to you. Again, that 2% benchmark, it restarts every single month. So yes, we want to make sure we're testing, and that includes residents and non-residents. We just want to see what's happening in our community. We're second lowest county in state still. And as we work through those reopening phases, you know, more people are coming in, more traveling situation. We're gonna see some more cases. It's not gonna completely go away, but when we do get cases, we're ready for it. The goal is to maintain that medical system of custody, to making sure that the people who need medical care the most have access to it. Right, Brittany? Okay. So yeah, your Health Department covers both Gulf and Franklin, and we have just the most amazing team possible. I could not be more than satisfied and working these two counties. And I think that the majority of the updates, of course, I want to thank all of you for all of your outreach efforts that you've been doing as leaders in the community. And we're just gonna continue to work together as we work through these phases. Now, when it comes to the Stack House, you know, let's keep in mind that the Health Department, we do not have the authority to approve or disapprove plans. We know that. But social distancing still remains key to preventing spread of the virus, right? And it's gonna be difficult to maintain social distancing at Stack House. There's risks associated with opening. We have to take that into consideration. Cases of contact tracing, when we do investigative work, have been sourced back to outbreaks occurring at summer camps and other youth programs in other counties. So we do understand that the Stack House has sort of served as a daycare for some, and it's helped people, helped parents stay at work. I completely understand. But it's not a daycare establishment. The reason why the daycares in our state that have opened are working is because they are grouped into smaller numbers of kids, and it's the same group of kids each day. And if they're tied to the same teacher or daycare provider, that's why that's been effective. The point of going to the Stack House is to kind of mingle with other kids. So social distancing would be very challenging. So again, we can't approve or disapprove, but we do have the ability just to let you know some of the health risks that would be associated if it were to open. Do you have anything to add? Okay, over everything. Social distancing, I think, is gonna be your biggest challenge, your biggest and hardest challenge.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming, and we've got to make a tough decision this morning on Stack House as well as the Washington Gym Recreation Area. So I'll open up the floor for discussion for that item.
I want to say something.
Go right there.
At the end of the day, though, people don't do what they want to do. Men are already living their lives, you know, carefree. All we are to be responsible for is allowing them to understand social distance. So when it comes to dealing with kids and our elderly, we need to understand that it's not about race. Number one, our number one goal is to protect our citizens. It was not about the Stack House against Washington High. It's not about how many white kids are attending the Stack House, how many blacks are attending Washington High. We have more kids of, we have more kids that are not of color attending the Stack, attending Washington High, that was not our student program, summer program, than we do blacks, you know? I mean, it's almost a 50/50 ratio when you look at it. So definitely, race, ethnicity, none of that has anything to do with the decision that we're gonna make. I feel like one day, we're gonna have to start stepping out and allowing our parents, to take more control of their kids, and the doors are gonna be open. Kids are already hanging around each other. So the decision that I make, I feel that we need some structure. We need our kids to have an understanding of that and just get them running around doing other things that they have, they have no business doing. We had several block parties, so-called block parties in North Port St. Joe the last few weeks. I mean, people are everywhere. So when it comes to a program that's providing assistance to some parents, I know that Washington Gym is a daycare facility, but it does add structure to families' lives. So when we make that decision of whether we should open Washington High or not, it shouldn't be about race. It's about giving our kids opportunity to have some structure in their lives. A lot of kids don't have that. Walk around the streets and getting the things that normally they wouldn't do. So I believe it's really important that we think about opening Washington Rick. We need to think about opening Stack House. They're two different buildings. Stack House is small. Washington Rick has the good size in it where you can, distant kids, a little villa. Outside facilities are nice. You have plenty of area out there to separate kids if you have kids. So with that said, I believe that I support opening Washington Rick, Rick Residence. And I thought about it and come to the conclusion, or somebody gave you some good words. This morning, the church is a pool, restroom is a pool. Those are doing and enjoying what they want to do. Ms. Bodine may have some type of class that teaches kids how to social distance themselves. So let's think about kids right now and think about letting them get out and get some structure. And that's how I feel about the situation.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, you're absolutely spot on there. I think the only point that you missed is, you know, this summer program as well is where a lot of these kids eat during the day. And that may be just a meal that they're getting that whole day. I think if there's a way to do this, limit the inside contact and start promoting more outside programs, you know? Maybe only 75 kids allowed in the gym at any given time. You have outdoor activities organized. Kickball, you do basketball, whatever you want to do. Same thing with the Stack House. Cut it down to only 25 people inside. You know, this isn't gonna be board games and video games anymore this summer. You're gonna be outside playing on the playground or, you know, playing ball. I'm with you. I support it. I support opening it with major restrictions on indoor activity.
And also, I think we need to find out the number of kids that attend the programs. I don't think that the number should increase as the summer goes along. I think we should keep the same amount of kids continuously, average out, and hopefully they can be from the same home. If not, you know, it's gonna be a challenge. I know it's gonna be a challenge, but I think it can be done.
I do have a question. Do we allow visitors to attend those programs, kids that are on vacation from out of state? Do they come to the Stack House or Washington Gym on?
The Stack House does allow visitors.
I would be against that, unfortunately.
Somebody has a cousin who's visiting for the summer, we allow them to...
So how do we deal with that situation? Well, I'm... We just heard from Sarah Heinz that what we're getting is people going places and people coming here. We're not spreading it amongst ourselves. It didn't say, "I went to a neighbor's house and I caught COVID." Instead, somebody gave it to me from out of state. So I'm very skeptical allowing out-of-towners to utilize our programs.
I think, don't they have application with the kids, addresses? And driver's license, a parent's driver's license or something like that? I think that Ms. Bodine should be able to filter out the ones that live here and don't coming in from out of town, and that would be really very, very important, Ms. Kim, in order to keep everything down.
Jim, do we have a way to do that at the Stack House?
Yeah, you can monitor the parents. Most of the kids don't have a driver's license or ID, but I think it is possible that you could, when you sign up with kids, that the parents have to show that the kids are enrolled in school in Gulf County. Their Gulf County experience. I do think that is feeding the kids.
Okay. Just real quick, I know what the parents are going through, and I'm going through it, too. I mean, I'm paying a babysitter, you know, $500 a month just to watch my kids, and I know I'm not the only one doing it. Now, money doesn't matter, to an extent, but I'm gonna be on the supporting side as well in opening both.
Through the commission.
Also, that's helping me get an understanding, too. You have single parents that do work, that work hard. You have some, you know, that may try to, you know, go and look, whatever. Majority of single parents, they work hard, you know? And sometimes it may not happen the way to take their kids. Like Brett, he has to get a babysitter. Not saying that it's a, that opening up will get you, but it helps. I mean, that's just the bottom line. It helps. It helps them.
Okay, I just want to come, first, I agree completely. Mr. Langston, this topic has nothing to do with what side of town we live on. It has to do with what's safest for the kids. To insinuate that it does is an insult to me and anyone else in the decision process. I do think that not only does the Washington Gym program meet a need in the community, I think they do an amazing job while meeting that need. And I sat here and read over their plans, and the fact that Brittany is still here, I was gonna ask Brittany to weigh in on the plan. And you probably need time to read it, but I would like some input from the Health Department after reading the plan, because I think it's really well-written. And I realize the Health Department doesn't make the decision, doesn't enforce it, but I believe we should at least hear them, and maybe they can make some suggestions to the plan and to the plan at the Stack House. All along, you've heard me say that I'm going to support what comes down from the Governor's Office and from the CDC. So my question really would be to the Health Department, do the two plans meet the requirements of the CDC and what the Governor has allowed when they opened up the summer program? If they don't, then we may have to make a few adjustments. I am going to be in total support of opening the Washington Gym program. There's too many kids and too many families that are impacted by that. So unless someone can say, hey, if you open this, we're going to have a big negative impact, then you have my support. The Stack House, I read the plans on that. It's a little bit different. For one, I talked to Jim today prior to the meeting and said, well, do we have the applications for people to actually work and run the program? Right now, we don't have that. We have two. Okay, we have two people. I think that we can still make this happen. And it may take another few days to tweak the plan with the help of the Health Department and input from them, but I'm in support of opening both places, both locations.
Any other comments? I assume, Sarah, have you seen the plans on either for Stack House reopening or Stack House reopening or the Washington Gym reopening? Have you guys had a chance to look at that at all?
Your only plan that I received so far is the Stack House plan. So is Ms. Kim here?
Here we go.
Oh, there she is. We had a quick conversation about her plan in place, and we can certainly work with you. I'm not sure if a decision was made on support of the plan, not yet, but before the... the plan not yet and forward, but we did have a chance to kind of review the Stackhouse plan and again, taking into consideration the challenges associated with social distancing. Um, do you want me to provide just a couple of, okay? This is with Brittany, we, we talked about this.
What did she do?
Okay. We were sitting on our testing site, coming up with ideas of how would this, how would this layout look? Um, okay, so there needs to be a way to reach parents for emergencies at the Stackhouse. Um, but, you know, but also if the children have been COVID-19. So I can, my, my, you know, also, I can, um, a registration form of some kind to let them know that COVID-19 is still ongoing and kids need to go together, increase exposure to the virus. Um, we're in, you know, phase two, like I mentioned, as the Governor's reopening the plan, we still have a phase two to go, so we just don't wanna let our guard down. Um, so having some sort of registration form will also help to collect that parent caregiver contact information. You could have, and you could use the opportunity to explain that your child will be screened each day. That's, that's a really important process. Um, the Methodist Learning Center, which is, uh, one of the daycares here, has a template that you can look to, just trying to make other opportunities. Upon arrival, Stackhouse, your child will be screened for symptoms of COVID-19, which doesn't include a temperature check. Children with symptoms will not be permitted to retake any Stackhouse activities, including suggestions that we have there. Or have thermometers, so we do, screening would include a temperature check of some sorts. And, uh, we were asked, you know, could we, could we order some, and we could make those a good one. Um, it looks like in the, the Stackhouse plan, there's an, an early kid crew in the morning and then an older youth group in the afternoon, is that right? Okay, so, um, it would be preferred that parents, you know, are present dropping off, uh, at least the early kid crew to, to help answer screening questions and to keep children out, you know, if they were to have symptoms. I know that's probably gonna be somewhat of a challenge if you move forward on this and kids come off their bikes and things of that nature. And I have already mentioned it being, again, difficult for social distancing, uh, you know, but you do wanna encourage that, that's the part. When it comes to square footage of the Stackhouse, small, and it, and it sounds like, um, if you were to, first of all, the less and better of the kids who are entering, um, but we would recommend, you know, break, we were thinking about maybe rotating the kids in hydration breaks. So with the amount of students or amount of children that are there, um, however that happens every four, five minutes or so, half outside, half inside, rotate, monitor the kiddos outside to make sure you're not having them falling out from the heat. It's hot out there, I get that. Um, clean as you're able to do a deep cleaning between the shifts, like was mentioned in the, in the Stackhouse plan. But those are, those are some suggestions that we have. Again, we can't, and really you have to take into consideration, if you have one kid who, who has symptoms and they have positive, you have a lot of contact tracing involved for that, for that particular Stackhouse.
If you had a kid, would you allow him to go to the Stackhouse based on the recommended guidelines that we've written?
Difficult to say. Um, you know, I'm. I'm very, very much on the spot.
You're the expert witness.
I think, yeah, I think children's safety is our, obviously our, our priority and we wanna make sure they're, they're safe at all times. I prefer the daycare, daycare route just based on smaller groups of children and the same amount of kids with the same provider. But I'm a public health employee, so I can't get sick and I need to make sure that my family, um, you know, healthy at all times that way we can continue the work and for our community. The challenging question, um, hard to, hard to certainly answer.
I'll give you another minute. No, I appreciate your guidance.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure. Thank you so much. We'll be working with you more.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought it was a pretty good answer.
Yeah. Sounded like a politician.
Okay, we're, uh, we're on our own business and, uh, talking about opening up and, uh, there's some good plans here. She made some good suggestions. Uh, I don't, um, it's, it's very tough. Uh, there's been some very good statements. Uh, I, I came to the meeting, um, leaning probably sixty, forty not open. Uh, but, uh, heard some convincing arguments this morning, all of them are very good arguments. I, I would say that, uh, we, we still have the option, uh, to, uh, shut it down if things get out of hand. Uh, I, I know we have that option, so, uh, with the Health Department increasing amount of testing, uh, that would give us a, somewhat of guidelines of what, what we need to do going forward. Uh, temperature checks are, are a big thing. Uh, Jim, do, do we have infrared thermometers? We're gonna have to have that. The ear thermometer is not more.
You're going in right now? It sounded like, uh, we need to, Sarah Hines to see, so give their expertise forward.
I, I, I received some, uh, information yesterday, uh, they're about retail about a hundred dollars a piece for the infrareds, uh, so I, we, they can provide on that being better, but, uh, I, I, we've got, we've got to have probably three, you gotta have a backup, one in each place and a backup in case one of them, uh, doesn't work. So, uh, anyway, we wanna move on, we'll, uh, let's, uh, I'll entertain a motion for a summer recreation program.
So move now.
So just, just one, one minute, we'll get a motion, second, then we'll have a discussion. Okay? And your motion, uh, Mr. Langston as well?
My motion is, um, that we open both Stackhouses and, um, Washington Rick, Summer Recreation, unless, uh, how should I put it? We have been increasing, uh, in COVID or, or what? How should I put that?
If contract tracing brings it back to the Stackhouses, the place that it happened.
Okay. Or if we deem necessary to close it.
You've got to be specific.
Right.
Yeah, revisit it in a day.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so basically, your recommendation is open and with optional revisiting, uh, maybe, okay? I don't know the plan laid out by. Cut exactly. Everybody understand that, the plans, and, and we tweak them as we go along, really, increase the restrictions. Okay, there's a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, there's a second, uh, Commissioner Hoppen for discussion.
Um, I'd like to ask if Mr. Langston would be open to maybe have a language in there that would say, we'll be working closely with the Health Department, because right now, we just asked them to work with both groups to maybe tweak and hopefully improve their plan. Uh, I'd like to have the Health Department in an active role and partnership with, with all the parties, and if they see a breakdown, then they could report back to us or work individually with both programs and make suggestions. Because I think we all in agreement, every player in the, in the plan is trying to do the best he can get safe, healthy. So if they see a breakdown, we would support and encourage them to work with the, the different groups and, uh, and make sure we're doing everything that we can.
That's the expert I can, so you just want to amend your motion that would, so you opened up and, uh, with the, uh, assistance of the Gulf County Health Department? Okay, your, your motion.
Motion's standing.
Motion's standing, okay. Uh, discussion, any more from the floor of the Commissioners? Okay, I'll, I'll look forward, anybody like to discuss, come forward. Okay.
Fair, we had discussion as to lending to Gulf County students. Is that something you wanna consider and right there up to all students?
I think the Health Department would probably offer that advice.
Yeah, I think, I think that was, that was understood, but if, uh, we need to add that to the motion, uh, you'd be able to that, yes, strictly to Gulf County, uh, students. Uh, a second, okay with that?
Still, okay. But be aware that we would be turning away Gulf County students who come with a cousin from out of town, and then they would be turned away.
Unless the cousin wants to go alone with the.
Right.
Resident state, yeah.
Right, but just to be aware, that, that, that's what we.
Correct, correct. Okay, uh, discussion from the floor, Mr. Davis, she likes to come forward.
I'm Marvin Davis and, uh, question I have is, I heard about the Stackhouse, I heard anything about Washington Recreation Center, uh, and their plans. It was discussed.
The plans are there.
The plan is there, but is the public fully aware of the, of the, that, the plan?
I know Ms. Bodine come up last meeting and she, she was here today, if she'd like to come forward, she laid out a land, she laid out a plan to us, a very meticulous plan, and it's, uh, it covered all bases, actually it's stricter than, than Stackhouse restriction and, uh, I mean, we're feeling comfortable with it, uh, so.
You have to be, be comfortable with it, but it's a public, you know, because it's our children. And I could say, we, we wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that it's, it's really safe and, 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 you know, none of the kids is at risk.
Right, and everybody can have a different opinion about what's safe and what's not. We just have to make the decision that, that looks best to us and the experts have approved and the people that run the, the system have approved, so, uh, so.
So if she has a plan, I, I like, I like it here before you guys vote.
Here's the point.
Okay, here, I'll, I'll kind of summarize it real quick. They're gonna have children in groups of fifteen, four groups will be in the classroom areas, three groups will be in the gym but separated into subgroups of fifteen by dividers, eight, nine, ten-year-old. Two groups will be in the reading room. A divider will separate the room for four and five-year-olds. As much possible children will be spaced one chair apart. There are seven groups for a total of a hundred and five kids. They'll be staying primarily in their groups, with the exception of those located in the gym where they will walk up to the tables near the kitchen area to pick up their lunch, which will be carried back to their class space and consumed there. Or go to the computer lab or to watch a weekly movie. For those in this likely room at the wig building, their lunch will be brought to them. They have computers in the classroom and their weekly movie can be shown there as well. All field trips will be local. I've attached a waivers that we plan to use with covers anybody they work with. Uh, that would be city, county, coupon, and, uh, so, so in a nutshell, that's what they're gonna do. And then they go into how they're gonna sanitize.
That's all I wanted to hear. What, what the man wants?
Yeah, that's it. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to come forward?
Charles, yeah, this. I'm not here to speak on one way or the other with you guys making decisions or actually you guys making decisions, but I wanna ask a question, boy, it's, uh, legal. Somebody come out there and something happened, but at that point, somebody contracted out to the gym or the city liability.
We have insurance for all liability insurance, anything happens on our property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And we'll probably find out about the city, you know, as it's valid, this is, we don't face this before.
Right.
So, but that, that, the only reason I ask that question, Colvin, that would be something that would be, I understand, I'm for the kids, I'm understanding that, but I look at it a different way than most people, I guess. Uh, even with church, we not having church at you. We, we, we going for, uh, social media, a different thing.
Yeah.
Uh, me, my personal opinion, I think not only the city, county, and the state, I think that we, we re-licensing too much and we letting our product. Most of the time when we do that, it bites.
That's all. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
That's the number one.
Hello, Ms. Matthews.
Now, I've heard, and it's been documented, that kids can be carriers. And if you're going to, well, test them, as they come into the gym, and are they being tested going out? They can be carriers and come home and infect the grandparents, the parents and everything else. So they can be tested and, and not know it.
Kids, kids, kids can be carriers, be asymptomatic, uh, never have any symptoms, but give it to us.
Yes, exactly. And they have grandparents in home, have parents in home. So and then when the parents or grandparents get it, what happens?
Yeah.
They go back to summer school as usual, as if nothing happened, and we'll never know.
That's correct, so.
Okay.
We're trying to stay on top of that, hopefully, uh, we won't have an outbreak. Okay, anyone else? Need more discussion? All right, we'll bring, bring into a vote, all in favor of opening up summer recreation program, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, most passes, five and o. So we'll move forward, we'll be safe, uh, we hope we'll get through it without any problems. So we'll move on, uh, Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir, the next item, Census 2020, which will remind everybody, uh, to make sure that your family is accounted for, it's very vital for funding for our community. Uh, they can go to twentytwentycensus.gov or they can go to, uh, call me in at eight four four three three zero twenty twenty. Please make sure your families are accounted for.
I, I thank everybody, uh, not everybody, but, uh, I know Bay County's had quite a few ads on television lately and, uh, uh, so, uh, that, that helps ratchet up our thinking a little bit too, that we certainly got to do it, so. I hope the churches are talking about it and everybody talks about it, because we're gonna be in trouble with our funding if we, if we don't have a good, uh, I don't know what our numbers are right now, Jim, maybe by next meeting, if you reach out and get our numbers, uh, that, uh, what percent of our population reported so far. I know Franklin County is having a tough time. Walton County, South Walton County, where all the growth is, Walton County, only ten percent. So they're gonna lose their reputation if they, if they don't get going a little bit. So anyway, something we have to do.
I'll remind everybody, we are scheduled for our Black Forest fireworks, we have been contacted by shows and will be killed at four, ten o'clock. Uh, we were hoping to utilize the on-mill site, but unfortunately, we did not get approval from the leadership, so we'll just fall back to Clifford Sims Park, as scheduled, ten o'clock on.
So, nope. Anybody else seeing any more old business, anybody? All right, let's move to new business.
Our new business, first item we have is the Maddox Park. We have Ms. Eva Maddox Davis here today representing the, uh, Maddox family to, uh, give you an update as to where we're at.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Eva, we appreciate it.
Mayor, Member of Commissions, I'm, I'm Eva Davis, I live in Tallahassee, how did I grow up in St. Joe? And thank you for the opportunity for us to present some of our ideas about how a night like this, six hundred years of innovations took part. I think you have a pretty extensive packet of materials where we have, um, the original brochure when the park was dedicated and a lot of pictures over the years showing you what happened on that property down to early nineteen hundreds. on that property down to early nineteen hundreds. That home that stood until Hurricane Michael was built in nineteen thirty-seven and it lasted for eighty-one years until Hurricane Michael was totally obliterated. The only thing that remains now is the fireplace, and there's a picture in your packet of what the fireplace looked like before it was destroyed. The significance there historically is that those stones were bough stones, had their own sailing vessels that came into their own St. Joseph's, like eighteen thirty-six forty-four. My grandfather would build on the bay and pick them up and then use them to front and place them on the fireplace. So that, that's the significance of those that were there. That's really the only original thing from the home that's left. The roofs that are there were from when they lived, the house up a few years ago. By way of brief background, our family ties go back that many, how many, fifteen years. Our great-grandfather from Appalachia Tola was hired in nineteen oh five with San La Bay. Some men were looking for a way to export pines and they were building a railroad from Chattanooga down to St. Joe, but they knew a way to have a dock to export the timber. So our great-grandfather was hired to come down, help San La Bay find the first point where the water came the closest to the land, and then they would build the dock. So that was about nineteen oh five to nineteen oh ten. And my grandfather helped with that. They built a little bunk house, which is shown there in the packet. And he lived in bunk houses they built it after it was completed about nineteen ten when the first sailing vessel, Norwegian ship, really came into the upper part of that. Our grandfather then leased that land, he left for World War One in France, he came back, married my grandmother. What a lot of people don't really know, though, is that there's an interesting lawsuit behind that land. After leasing the land from the Port St. Joe Dock and Terminal Company, our grandparents entered into a sales contract in nineteen twenty-five to purchase the land, we were making four installment payments. Well, the Great Depression occurred and they're only able to make their interest payments on the land. But the St. Joe Dock and Terminal Railway Company accepted all their interest payments. Unfortunately, my grandmother's saved all proceeds. Well, passed forward two years later in nineteen thirty-four, my grandfather went to make his last payment on the land and received title. Mr. Ed Ball had instructed the company not to give him title for the land. He felt that they defaulted on the contract and we know the company wanted to keep all their money. So the ownership was placed in Estro and my grandparents hired a lawyer, Mr. Finch out of Marianna, and they went to serve a court and my grandparents prevailed. But the most amazing thing to us is that the company then appealed to the Florida Supreme Court. And in nineteen thirty-nine, the Florida Supreme Court, my grandparents' favor, and they received title, and it's not offering. The individuals prevailed against the larger company that they grew up. So this land was always very special to us for that reason. My grandparents then built another home on the land, they lived there until their deaths in nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen eighty-two. But then they had kept the land, they moved out, so the house didn't make it. And then we began thinking, what can we do? Well, we met with the Nature Conservancy and we weren't totally in step with them on what they wanted to do. By God's grace, we stumbled into the Florida Communities Trust. And we worked for a couple of years with them, who are appraisers and assessment of the land. And then the Florida Communities Trust was willing to give the money to purchase the land for my parents. But my parents had two points they wanted to be made on that land. They wanted it to be a passive park where it would only be used for recreational purposes. And the second thing is they wanted to make sure, remembering the lawsuit with the company, that the land would only be used as a park and it could never be sold. It can never be traded. And the company could never get money. So we were pleased. My license agreed in nineteen ninety-six with the Florida Communities Trust. The brochure on the front, that was for nineteen ninety-seven, with the opening of the park. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, if you look on the back page of the brochure, you'll see our family there. Young girl in the front in the purple open wall is our daughter Catherine, who is called Ashley. But this is our daughter Catherine, who is now many years older. But we have enjoyed that for many, many years and we always want to have that as a part and so to the people. I have been in contact, we have four points we just like briefly making. I would hate to say, we realized we had a complaint with that one. That's gone. But we would offer our suggestions to what might be a good way to use the land going forward now. Towards the back of the brochure, you'll see some pictures. What we want to recapture is that simple, old sort of feeling. I've been in touch with Lauren Cruz and Will Bev and the Florida Communities Trust to make sure that our suggestions are in line with the control, because, because the land was purchased with the Florida Communities Trust dollars, the Florida Communities Trust in its entirety will have final say over the use of that land, working with the city or anybody else. The first thing is we'd like the boughed stones from the fireplace to somehow be incorporated in the historical matters, since that reaches back to Old St. Joe. And we don't have too many things from Old St. Joe that are still around. The next three items, we have pictures at the very back of the packet. We've noticed that a lot of southern towns have a gazebo. And the first gap is just demolished. Then people along ninety-eight would have an absolute clear view all the way down to the bay. The nicest gazebo that I've ever seen is one over in Appalachia Tola. And we've included two pictures there of the gazebo from Appalachia, just a pristine neat open space where people could come and sit, look out on the bay. We would hope that there would be enough funding, whether it be insurance and FEMA, to have nice vegetation like brick pavers. So this could really be a fine spot in Port St. Joe that they're probably gonna find a. The second thing, there's a picture that I found, is an observation tower. And it would be maybe on the end of the property near the bay and it would allow visitors to go up maybe twenty feet to look out on the bay and get a little better perspective of the shoreline. The tower at St. George appears to rise about twenty feet. I understand there are liability issues, like, also, sir, if you have a lighthouse next door, so I'm sure you're familiar with your liability issues. The third, I'm sorry, the fourth and final thing is that you go to some places like the Mayons or even Waukulla State Park, you'll see a viewfinder of large manly commercial dinoculars. We think that would be a nice addition where people could look out on the bay. I looked at some in Waukulla this past week. I've also Googled viewfinders. There's a company called Seekers down in Fairhope, Alabama. They have different models that have some that would be eight-deck compatible with one wheelchair on ground, or if you wanted maybe twenty-five hundred dollars plus shipping, you could have a viewfinder upon the observation decks that people would have a bit of an elevated view to look out on the bay. The other items, I'm sure, the restroom facilities, the park benches, the bike track, the walking trails, where the viewer can view. But those are just our thoughts and I'd be happy to give, just to tell you all the numbers that I have with the people that I've spoken with at the Florida Communities Trust. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Eva, I appreciate that presentation. It's, we don't talk about history, it's forgotten. And I wasn't a best history student back in high school days, but as I've gotten older, I have a greater appreciation for history and I like that it's great being reminded. And I didn't have some of those stories you just talked about. I really appreciate that. From my perspective, it's a great area, we getting ready to, we got money to, and the approval, I think we got the approval to pipe that ditch right next to it. And so that'll, that'll make it even more accessible. So I'm excited about getting something back there.
I have a couple of things. First, I realized how old I may actually be getting when you pointed out who the young lady over here is, because I remember her and maybe her sister riding bikes all over town every summer. So I was like, oh, where am I? Not speaking. You made a statement that said, you don't feel like you'd have a claim to the land legally? Are you an attorney? Yeah. So I just want to point out, I believe you do have, you know, a legal claim, but I believe that it will always be a part of your family's property. So thank you for the suggestion, that's a great suggestion. The only other question I had is, when you mentioned the restroom that used to be there, another committee is talking about building a much larger restroom up towards the corner past the lighthouse. If we did move forward with that, would you still ask to have the restroom replaced close to the hall?
Mr. That would be under the Florida Communities Trust and their guidelines, which are what we're seeing. They might be able to look at the property and try to investigate.
Right. Okay, because my support is going to be build it back, however the family and this other group, I don't know, leads us in that direction. And side note, I've never liked Ed Ball for his genaniigans up in Waukulla County in the spring, so I just like him even more today.
You can't stay at forty anymore.
Yeah, I was told that when I moved to St. Joe, that I had to like Ed Ball. Thank you.
Anybody out there, questions, comments? I just thank you for coming today, it's good to see you and good to talk to you.
I love, I love the designs, I'd be happy to either.
Yeah, so let's get to work.
I'd just like to say thank you for the input and that commission of the state, you know, you know, defending the diet, you know, I'm doing my best to support it.
I've spoken with the Florida Communities Trust several times, to make sure that I was still within the guidelines, even if I didn't step outside of the branch suggestions, because I don't want to ruin this for you.
Yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Eva. Moving along, the next item we have is the overlay district, pass quarter. As we've been working for the past couple of years to try to rezone the MLK corridor, we started the process with the Ray Greer. It's got us to this point now that to finish the project for the city, we would need to actually do an overlay district that would actually give the rules with land development regulation. We have the zoning force has been done, but we need to do the overlay district. Reconsideration today, we do have a task order from Mr. Ray Greer, we need to take that task for us.
Jim, am I correct in assuming that we do have a budgeted amount of money for our planner, correct?
Yes, we do.
Within that budget?
It is. We do a plan for the next month every year, we put it through Mr. Ray Greer.
Motion to approve the, the order.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Hoffman, second by Commissioner Ashbrook, to approve the task order to move forward with the overlay district as well for the renovation and improvement of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Discussion. Any discussion, any discussion from any commissioner first? Anybody?
We've discussed it for six years, Mary.
Excuse me?
We've been discussing for six years. Let me get it done.
Come forward, please.
Chester Davis, President Pat, on the board of the CDC. We also have Mr. John Henry on Zoom, calling in, he's wanting to have some questions, because he was part of the plan, setting up that overlay when we put in the application to increase the density on Martin Luther King. So we had him call in, I don't know if he was listening or not, but he was hoping that it would be available in case you guys had any question about that overlay, because he had worked with Mr. Greer on putting that plan together. And so if they was gonna move forward with that, I was hoping that the city would improve the game, information that he can bring forward to get that, that go forward. The other thing is that I was, last time I was at the board, we brought up the fact of John Henry being our consultant.
Chester, can we just stick to this for right now? This is, this is, that doesn't pertain to this motion. And we'll allow you to speak on that after we get through this motion. All right. Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. Greer or Mr. Henry, who's, who's on Zoom at present time?
I'm comfortable with moving forward and proving, I don't need any.
Yeah, there's gonna be public hearings. Oh, and that's this.
Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion passed, five and oh. All righty, next item.
Yes, sir. The next item we have is representative four-way stop at Long Avenue and Fourth Street.
Yes. You guys wait there on Williams?
Yeah.
No, Long and Fourth, I'm sorry. There's a four-way stop right there by that Super Rastler mentions in the hair salon. I hear this every year, I'm sure y'all do too, have to follow your paperwork with the SOE, but it's true. Nobody's stopping when they're going down Long Avenue. They seem to stop this way, but not that way. And if the assumption is that these cars are gonna stop, the other direction's gonna just go ahead and go. And I witnessed almost two near accidents there. I just don't see a reason why Long Avenue can't be at Third Street on that portion.
Just. Comments on that, please, sir?
I, I don't have an opinion either way. I'll take the Sarah Hines answer, right? No, I don't have an opinion either way, but two and a half years ago, I think this board was brought the same thing and we didn't do it, because I think you need to talk to Ms. Debbie Butler, who had the hair shop across the street. She's the one that way back, we didn't ask for it because of her customers backing out into the road, almost causing accidents. And I think that probably someone, someone needs to reach out to.
To the owner of that business.
Find out if she's okay with it, because she wasn't okay with it last time and that's why I got squatted.
That's brilliant, truly, too, if you think about it, the health department, not the health department, Super Rastler Election Office, they're also backing out into Long. So good, good thought, I thought about it.
I just wanted to bring it up today and kind of feel all the board. I didn't realize that two and a half years ago, it was shot down by this phone reader.
Yeah.
But I do know that people aren't stopping, maybe just a few tickets.
And I've had quite a few comments and suggestions about opening it also, but I do think, to be totally transparent, let's talk to, talk to both sides, Jim, if you reach out to Super Rastler Election Office and any business on that that'll be affected on those four corners. I think we all feel better about doing, making a change if we're gonna make one.
That's good.
Okay.
So how about that?
All right, next item, Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir. Last time we had, this is the boat ramp credit card machine, which we drafted a lot of this for us.
Yes, this, actually I brought this up, probably four years ago, when we were having, when the parking problems on Reed finally came in front of this board. And we talked about possibly a pay-to-park. And we found some machines at our last convention that we had down in Orlando. And they, at the time, I think a solar machine was right around ninety-five hundred dollars. It would basically print you out a ticket, you put in your credit card or pay cash or however you want to pay. You've been through an app. I think that might be the answer to our boat ramp problems, as far as people not paying. But then I spoke to, who told me about the arm? Was that you, Jim? No, Mike. I'm actually starting to think now, maybe having an arm for entry into that portion right there where the restrooms are at. So the people that want to go to the park, just go left and park there in that city lot. But if you want to access the boat ramp, you're gonna have to pay to pass the arm. Either a situation like that or an actual credit card machine right at the boat ramp would be the only way to kind of ensure that everybody that's launching the boat is paid. And for the enforcement side of it, you don't have to involve the police department if we don't want to. You put up signs saying that this lot is patrolled by XYZ towing company. And then we just gave them a whole bunch of business, too. It takes us out of the, but we'll ensure that we get paid. Just wanted to bring that up for discussion. I know that we've had several instances where people can't put money in because it's full, instances where there's not, where there's not an envelope available, or if they don't have cash, you know, they're like, I'll get you next time. But this is, this is one way to ensure that we get all of our money back out of the boat ramp. And we've got the money in our boat ramp fund, we're over thirty thousand dollars now. I think this would pay for itself in July, Mark. I don't know what the number of people are that don't pay, but I hear about it all the time from the boat captain saying, I see these guys are not paying. So it's a problem we know about and I think it's a simple solution.
Oh, and I agree with you totally, but to me, there's a whole lot of other little Oh, I, and I agree with you totally, but to me, there are a whole lot of other little issues that we need to talk about. And I, this is probably a good two hour workshop, but I, I like to make workshops once we're all, get the sticker program in place, do all those things, involve the public a little more, they use it a lot. And maybe at the end of that workshop, end of that day, we'll have something in place. Let's do this and move on.
America, we have staff just go on a technology hunt and see what we can find and what the pricing is for these different options.
I don't have a problem with that at all. I mean, but, but one issue with the arm is Gulf County residents. How are they gonna get to the, the arm without paying something? We've exempted them and the city residents. So, I think there's a lot we have to talk about. Any just items?
I think it's a great idea. My suggestion would be just look and focus on the machines that prep out something to put on your dash, like you go to the airport parking. That way whoever is enforcing it can look for that item showing that they pay. Right now, we don't really have a lot of signs. I think there's people that have no idea you're supposed to pay. The, the place you put the money looks like a garbage receptacle to me. So I think part of it's on us, it's not lit up like it should be. The other committee's working on getting power finally run, to run a machine and light it up. But I, I think it's a good idea and we just gotta work out and find the details.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's talk about a workshop sooner than later. If you guys want a workshop that lets others know that we are gonna do that and then boat captain, all affected can, can be in attendance. Day being the sixteenth. What about, and what time to make it accessible to everyone? I assume five o'clock, six o'clock to be the time to have it. Is that good with everybody? Now we'll talk about a day. We've got, in this month, we've got, well, I'm, I'm going off next week, twenty ninth to thirtieth of this month. Anybody got comments on one of those days?
I'm going back to getting that with America.
Okay, all right. So we're off over into July. We got P S A R A at eleven o'clock on the, on the seventh. And then we meet at twelve. So.
Make it a marathon.
I'm open. Or you want?
Do it that day.
I'm just, I'm just worried about folks not being able to be here in the middle of the day.
We come out at five again, come back.
Oh, okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Do it all done in one day.
Yeah. And after our meeting, go on with the rest. But anyway, anybody go, y'all okay with July seventh? At five or six, what, what's the pleasure? Good, good, okay. I just asked staff to have some recommendations on the sticker deal and maybe a possible ordinance. And make sure it hits the, hits our Facebook page and website and all that to let folks know. And so, and Mr. Carl will, I'm sure, it'll be in the paper and we'll, we need to try to get this thing, it's almost like parking downtown, we need to go ahead and get this thing off.
Mr. Jim, we would have P D R B that day at four o'clock. P D R B at four o'clock.
Doesn't normally last over an hour, does it? So we'll be here about, and I do agree with the machines. We've got, we've got, we've got the money in that. That's what we charge for, for improvements. So, okey dokey, any, any other new business, Jim? Okay. Public Works, Mr. Grantland.
Yes, just, just briefly, after our last meeting, the more discussed options as far as stump driving, Mr. Anderson and myself, you know, went out for local combat. And the two bids you have cover basically on basefront property, plain pavement, to the metal, sure. So we thought we were prepared to do the board. Yeah, you got it.
Okay. Everybody understand what, what we're looking at? We got it in our budget? We're wearing our budget.
Yes, sir. We just confirmed this is beyond our faith, Ray, so.
Still in the wedding mode.
And what we can do if the board likes, we can look with this, and look still with Mr. other partners, similar to what we're doing with our kids and other repairs.
Okay, so entertaining motion to grab a stump, so basefront city property. So Mr. Mark, okay, the most by Mr. Lawrence, there's second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ashbrook, any discussion on making the city look nice? On favor, aye? Aye. Same sign, motion passed by, a vote, so, that was honored, we'll.
Paul, I had to hear most of your questions.
Go ahead. What's the update on this, the reflected sticks in front of Hungry Allen's being replaced to repair?
I, I need to call Benny on that. I know he worked with me, I just don't know whether that's in process. They are appearing sidewalks on Constitution. I'll see you next day.
And what, what did you?
That is going to be this happening.
Okay.
Actually, I appreciate this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okey doke, surface water, Mr. Larry. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Unless the board has questions for me, I really don't have anything.
Thanks, Joe, for much movement.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Waste water, Mr. Kevin, there's a handout from Kevin. Over here, there it is.
The, the beds to cut the hole in, you know, C B buildings, so you can make that a shop, just redeveloping building. It's just a car hall and shore up the wall so you can put a door in and make that a shop. Beds are really far apart.
You're wrong.
Just, it's history with, right after Hurricane, when I asked about doing this thing, the garage store people, their estimates were in reference four to, you know, one guy said it's four or five thousand, the other guy said it's gonna be five or eight. Nobody's up over ten as far as their estimate of work. So I expected, you know, anywhere from that, that's kind of what I expected for the bid. So the low bid is where I would like to go. The guys are capable and licensed.
Well, you're comfortable, even though that, that far apart, you're comfortable with, yes, no, no prior work or?
I don't know anything about the prior work. They're new in town, they live here.
Okay, they are local.
Local, starting out here. So to me, the, the project is one that we can do ourselves, but we still have manpower and tools. I have to rent the stuff. Cut a wall and develop some angle. It's not that intensive a project. I'm comfortable with.
Okay, good. All right, good. I'll entertain a motion for, except for low bid for the wastewater treatment plant shop block wall open. That's a move. Motion back from Mr. Ashbrook, there's second. Second back from Mr. Langston. Discussing, any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Close, same sign.
Outside of that, and our pond is still doing well, we, we lost in the last two months twelve inches of, or three foot. So the plan is to start starting in July. We used this month out without any construction. And it's ready, we're just sitting wait on the work come right up. And we'll come.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's all I.
All right, questioning, or the question, when do you plan to start this project?
As soon as I can afford.
Tell them that they've got it.
Okay. We're gonna start right away.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Mike.
We, we have submitted the request for the N R C S grant for the ditch clearing. Then they'll process that, they'll send a final document back for your approval. In the meantime, John and I are gonna get together and lay out a bid spec and try to get a handle on what those costs would be. We have discussed with the county because they have the same grant for the same process and we are clear on, on the ditches that they're gonna handle. So they could eliminate our scope significantly and we don't foresee that larger project on our end. But John and I will get together and so we'll be able to have your bid specs before you, so we'll have a clear understanding of the work that's gonna be done and when we get that grant progressed for, for your.
And what's the dollar amount of that grant?
The total amount is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand available to us, but we don't anticipate that, that much. So that's moving forward. We continue to move forward with insurance work and FEMA claims, those processes are still ongoing.
Questions from Mike? Anybody? I've got a question. Cemetery, we got a cemetery fund, right?
Uh, we have budgeted, we have funds budgeted in recreation park.
How much we, yeah, how much we not budgeted?
I can't remember the number off the top of my head, I think it's ten thousand dollars.
But I was just concerned because we haven't proved out the, um, things like, proved out the graveyard and, uh, Peabody Sun, I think, might be focused on.
Really believable.
Yeah, something that's, we have benches there, but we need some just over here. I, I talked with John earlier, uh, I think it was last week, well, yesterday. Yeah. And they're gonna put a tent out, exactly, around, um, seats, but we do need to be thinking about what this pandemic going on and we haven't, um, proved, um, race that we, uh, we think about the sunlight and how it's affecting especially older people.
You're talking about a, a similar ones in Holly Hill that, that was dedicated to.
Yeah, we talked, I think we already have one, we have one out here, but it's not, it's not covering, completely covering the season. When we come out of the. What's different about four children? Because large oak tree. Doesn't provide shade, those are, that's, four children is kind of like. But I, I've talked with John and we'll make sure that we have, we have, you and I have been in contact with him, we're gonna set up a tent or whatever for now, but we need to think of, and start thinking about doing something different. Instead of running, John, they might be hitting Brad, uh, in the two, whatever, day before, you set up a tent, you need to have some increase back there.
Right, yeah.
But we do have some insurance money that we've not put back into the facility so we can get together and, and figure out how to allocate those funds. We see how it's coming up, so.
Yep, that's right.
I just wanted to talk, think about it right now.
Right.
Okay, real quick, I forgot to tell the board, we're all receiving on, uh, P O C auction and make squad next week.
Okay. Thanks, Martin.
Thanks, Mike.
All righty, Mr. Engineer, Mr. Backsley.
How are y'all?
Good, thank you.
On my list of updates, the first item are the N R D A stormwater grants. The first one is far as park, that's the one where D P provided, or Northwest Shore, I'm sorry, provided comments. I have those comments in hand, we'll be submitting those back for review, which that'll trigger their response and at some point they'll schedule that second hearing. I don't think anybody knows at that point when it'll be out. I've heard rumors that D P will actually pick back in their office on the twenty-sixth. So I'm assuming the Water Management District will probably follow suit, but I would be expecting some catch-up time past that, so it could be in the July, mid-October before we have that second hearing. The second one is the stormwater master plan, we're still actually working through taking the old city maps of the stormwater system, looking at every structure in the city and updating that map, getting all the structures and all the piping catalog at this point. Jim did provide me a due date document on that, so I'll be communicating that information to the city to make sure we get the deadline for that. E O T walking path, that's four city trails. I did finally receive confirmation on Friday that we are approved for an extension of that grant. We're required to submit the task one items, which about fifty percent of those are complete, the biggest part of that task one. Submit is the actual engineering design, but we have until September fifth of twenty twenty to submit those task one items and get approval. And that's well within our time frame. Once we submit those task one items, they'll assess everything and give us a final due date for the project, which I'm expecting them to extend it, you know, six months to a year. I think the final due date if it was a year extension would be November of twenty twenty-one. So I'm expecting them to make construction in, in twenty twenty-one, November. City beach sewer, those plans are complete, the job is advertised and the bids are due on seven fifteen. So that was the redesigned sewer to a C I P job, which will be, uh, line in the sewer system. Long Avenue at First Street is in station, we received it from earlier yesterday. So all items are complete for the S R F deadline on six thirty. Last one is the Commercial District Water and Sewer Trump Grant, which I met with John last week. We discussed what we thought was the best plan moving forward and what I've done is I've found some old documents where we did the water line replacement downtown. We actually located the sewer during that, all the utilities. So I'm creating a master map right now of our sewer. We're gonna provide that, and I'm gonna provide it to John, we're gonna provide it to Churchwell, give us a price to actually get a camera of that system to see what we have and what the condition is. That'll help us determine what the best method of repair and rehabilitation is.
New, Jim, do we need to make any kind of motion type approval for, for just wait till they give somewhat of a price of, or do we need to approve that with a cap? Or, I mean, it's the people that we have on that we've used before, is that right, John?
Yes.
Uh, I mean, can, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, can we, can we go ahead and approve that if it's under your bid threshold, Jim? If it's under ten thousand dollars, it just saves time, not wait for the very next meeting, go ahead and camera it and then they maybe come back to us and say, this is what we have and we can slip line it or we got to dig it up?
Yes, really, the board, anything under ten thousand dollars that this project is working, doing, according to board office, wish the board, it's every ten thousand dollars that we need to look at as far as where our pitch threshold is. Chester Mayor, our plan is to work with our city engineer, see if we can get a task order, if we can get this figured out, so we can vote for it on either rehab or replacement of the sewer.
So, I mean, you really and truly don't need a motion to do it, but we've already got, you've already got that authority, but, so Josh and Jim, go.
I'm sure they could with, you know, we'll move forward.
Okay. Any, any problem with that, John? Okay, all right. The deal, the deal is, I really would like to get an application in the prime, just test the waters. I think a little more open, some obstructive projects now, and I'd like to give, you know, give it a shot. So, okay, any questions for Josh? You got anything else, Josh? That is some, appreciate your work. No more questions, we appreciate it, we'll be talking to you soon, I'm sure. All right, code enforcement, they're working and I think folks know what's going on. All right, Police Department, you got something exciting?
Thank you, Mayor. As you may be aware, the bid process for the Police Department renovations ended yesterday, we opened it yesterday. The low bid was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars bottom on the list of construction. So I don't, I don't know what you guys are ready to do. are ready to do, but we, I would ask if you're going to approve the low bid, that you do it contingent upon John and I finding the time to review the bid, make sure it meets bid specs and all that sort of stuff, we have not had time to do that, so.
Okay, all right. Everybody knows what low bid is, we've got, it's model list construction, we have Chris from Model List here today, if anybody's got any questions, but the motion would be to accept a low bid contingent on review by the chief and John Van, make sure it meets bid specs, that, everybody understand that, comfortable with that? You know, I'm going to take that motion then.
Motion to accept based on contingency that it meets the bid requirements.
All righty.
A low bid to Model.
Model list construction, 137,994, there are seconds.
Second discussion.
Second discussion, go ahead.
What is in the budget for the police department renovation?
We have $127,000 remaining in funds for insurance and.
So we got to come up with the rest and this doesn't include furniture?
Does not include.
Well, it's my understanding, once we supply FEMA with the actual cost of it, we can then ask to cover the other 10,000, and which it may end up being 50,000 when we get into.
And what about contents also?
Right. Yeah, that, well, the contents are included in the FEMA amounts for coverage and pay, but, but yes, that, that is correct, the FEMA has indicated that the costs are greater than their estimate, they will up their estimate to meet the actual cost, as long as those costs follow proper purchasing guidelines.
So we, we're not only going to be able to request what we're approved today, but we'll also be able to send in another request and say, this is where our contents cost us to place as well.
That's my, that's my understanding.
Thanks, it's pretty, I'm shocked we got this close.
And I would say that we did receive $140,000 in insurance money in total, we escrowed that money, we haven't actually pulled that money out of our savings account, I mean, we did have $40,000 of expenses to clean the facility, but we didn't pay for those expenses out of our operating facility, still actually have 140,000 in savings. Second stance?
Second stance, okay. Any more discussion, discussion from the audience, public? All in favor of I? At the same time, let's pass 5-0 and let's get to work. All right, any other question for the chief?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, chief. Okay, so, Ms. Spears?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, on page 14 of your packet, there's a memo requesting permission to submit a grant application, we were contacted about this, we're still in the fact finding process on it, but we just need something with your blessings to be able to go forward. This applies to items that are either listed or eligible for listing on the National Historic Register, those are the ones that will be considered, I believe there's $8,540,000 to be dispersed between 11 counties. So Representative Schoof encouraged us to work with these people and apply for it, we are checking it out, working on it, get more information.
I think it's great because our initial centennial grant was 500,000, by the time they pared it down, it's under 300, and so it'd be good if we could finally report and finish that project. So I shouldn't have a problem with trying to, trying to get some of it.
There are four structures in Gov. County that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places, Centennial, Lighthouse Complex, the Keeper's Quarter, which is part of the Lighthouse, Fort Theater, and what used to be the Catholic Church is now the Garden Center, that's the only four that are listed on the National Register.
So will you include all those or?
No, sir, it's only what we own, it would be the Lighthouse and the Centennial.
Got you, okay. Questions? Ms. Charlotte, their motion to allow the grant application, fact finding, the movement of the motion section, whatever, one of these guys, okay.
Okay.
And, you want to further discussion on, on that? All in favor of I? At the same time, thank you, Ms. Charlotte.
All right, sir, I would, I would like to mention also, I don't know if all of you have turned in your Form 1 financial disclosure, this due to supervisor elections by July 1. If you haven't, please consider it real soon.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, citizens to be heard, anyone, anyone like to come forward?
Yeah, my name is Marvin, I got a question that I brought from the last meeting about the chair, this part, those posters, the windows coffin boards in the back, what update, are we going to still replace? Those posters, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah. Both, yeah, put those both down, I think last summer, stop these kids from getting by and put the chains up, so as soon as we can get the material and get some guys out there, we put John, that on top of John, you want to comment on that? Well, I mean, we've been trying, been trying really hard the past couple of years, kids and backup, and doing deviant, mischievous stuff with, in the vehicles, and it's just hard to try to keep, I mean, we keep officers out there, we control it, they move, they cut the chains, cut the ropes, I mean, we're doing the best that we can, and I, I talked with John, he's been on top of, I guess, gets him installed right now.
And was, is there a better option than the change?
Yeah, I think there is, and that's what I would go recommend, if we could do a chain reconstruction with a gate, you know, for maintenance reasons and so forth, that's probably an option, I don't think that's going to be very much money because the span's not that, that big, and I'd be glad to go out and get those costs related back to the, you know, if it's cheap enough and you want us to go ahead and do it, we'd gladly go ahead and do it. It's however the board wants to achieve that.
I think just work with Commissioner Eisen, y'all get together, and I think that's a great idea and just let it do it.
I mean, we'll call, we'll, we'll, you know, discuss.
I wouldn't think you need to come back to the board.
I don't think the cost is going to be there.
Okay, thanks so much for that. The next one, the question I asked on last meeting was about the young African-American police officer that we hired recently, and I asked a question, was, did he resign or was he dismissed? And if dismissed on what grounds? And the chief of police, he was not here.
Well, well, here's the way with any employee, new employee that we hire, they're hired on six-month probation, and during that time, that's, you know, they're not performing up to expectations of the, you know, head of whoever, whatever department it happens to be, and the authority to, you know, let somebody go from, basically, I guess you.
Was he, was he not, was he not performing?
Well, I, I don't think right now is, I mean, it's not a good time to talk about an individual, it's not a good time, but I don't like to bring up individuals, basically kind of on trial, let's put it that way. The best thing I think, Marvin, do, if you'd like to go and sit down with the chief, and I don't think he'd have a problem with that, I'll sit down with the chief and, and talk about the issue, but I just, it's just not, it's not appropriate, I don't think, to bring some individual to the forefront of a public need.
Okay, I got it.
But, but I mean, I don't, he's not trying to hide anything, I don't think, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk to you.
Okay. And the other, the other one I got to, Liberty Street, over there near where your father property is, between, I think it's one, one nine, one oh nine and one eleven, there's an old, there's a, there's a pine tree that been, I think struck by lightning, it's dead, and Liam, calling off, and I talked to one of the residents on the street that they've been concerned, and they've been brought up to attention about, what they say is on state property.
Yes, thank you, I talked with Mr. Hunter, he was scheduled to come in this morning to cut that, Marvin, but after speaking with everybody here this evening, okay, so yes, the tree should come down soon.
Okay, we thought the president, Liam, was concerned to ask you to bring this up.
No questions. Appreciate it.
All right, and that's, I like that.
Thanks, Marvin, appreciate your comment always.
Thank you.
Any other citizens, please come forward. Chester, you got his hand up first.
To the board, we was trying to interject based on what we talked about earlier, simply because of the fact that the overlay is part of John Henry and Mr. Greer planning together, that was one of the reasons I was trying to interject at that particular time, but I also want to further the conversation because at the last meeting I brought up the fact we wanted to discuss the PAC's request to the city about supporting our person that we put forward to be our consultant. We put our gift, the thing that, our scope that we drawn to all of the commission in order that we would have that discussion, I was hoping that we would be able to discuss that publicly today as to how we're going to move forward with getting some support, technical support from the city to the PAC, with the CDC of how we can support our consultant. That was one of the things I was just hoping that we can discuss.
I think it's, right now, it's time to do.
Yeah, we had discussed that, I thought I was got it, as to the scope, what we're doing, what we're doing, that we're trying to do, based upon the fact that family is coming in to help us and assist us, even with the scope of the overlay, what they're going to be referring to, especially when we have already gotten our consultant to get approval with the EBA, a grant, it's going to come in and assist us, it's not a consulting fee anymore, other than the fact that we need a consultant to guide us through that, that's been on the project since day one. And the other thing is the, you're talking about historical grant, we also got partnerships with University of Florida that wants to bring in historical grant funds for North Port San Jose special buildings or Washington High School out there, so those are the things that we got on the table, also Jesse Dupont has been funding us with, had one of the food programs, so some of the things that we're doing, we're actually working in the community to lessen any crisis that, you know, the city might be looking at. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring that forth and hear from the city commissioner and principal, how we can go forward with the city actually helping us out, supporting that.
So, so the issue, Chester, that you're really referring to is $33,500 for your consultant, I mean, that's the real issue that you're talking about, that you want us to somehow prove that amount of money for your consultant?
Well, I, I don't want to just say just the $33,000, now that, that comes from.
That, that was, that, well, that was in the memo I got from you.
But we're asking that regardless, we're asking the city to support our efforts in order to get something, they're doing this, that's actually the city's not doing, that we can do outside, so we're asking for support in doing that, if the cost is $33,000, then that's what we're asking.
Marvin. I'd like to say that John has been on the forefront of what we've been doing, what the PAC has been doing for a number of years, I think he deserves some compensation, I think that $33,000, we may have to discuss the amount, but as, I really feel that John should be compensated and should be still, still, still be involved in what's going on, on the north side, because you know, we're initiated from, and you know where they're trying to go right now, and he's been a part of, a part of it for a while, so I support giving something, but if, if we have to get together and figure out what we want to pay, if 33 is too much, let's, let's discuss that, but not keeping them aboard, I don't think it would be, it's bad.
I think that's the technical part that we've got to get through, Commissioner Eisen, that we can't just write a check to somebody for that amount, that amount of money without going through a bid process, so that's where the rub is with me anyway, so I just, I'm not against John, and I know there's folks out there that think I am, I'm, I'm watching out for the tax dollars of the city, for St. Joe, make sure they're spent appropriately and, and by, by the legal, legal aspects of what we're required to do, so, so that's why I ask questions, I'm sorry if I have, but I have to ask.
I mean, they should, I mean, you're supposed to ask, you're supposed to ask the question, and we all should, and if we know more about what's going on, let's, let's look into it, but I still think that with John already been in that position for all this time, that we need consideration, I'm not saying just, we're going to say, okay, let's just go and give you the 30, 30 some thousand dollars, what I'm saying is just, let's, let's talk about it, let's discuss it, let's move forward and decide what direction we want to move in. You can wait till, I mean, you can see that budget coming up, you know, there's something to think about.
Yeah. Just one question, Chester, is it, the PAC, is it a 501(c)(3)?
Well, we have 501(c)(3), CDC, I never made CDC, that's what the PAC created in order to gain power.
So the way that we deal with c3s or, or services that are provided to the city typically is we've got a line item in the budget called non-governmental organizations, it's set in stone every year, if you want to increase for the following budget cycle, you come and tell us what you want that extra money for, but I mean, we've been doing this with the United Society for, ever since I've been on board, if there's some way to figure out how to work the CDC in, you know, as a service that they're providing to the city, we could then justify paying into that, but have, you have to keep come back, it's bringing supporting documentation, you know, that's a lot of extra work, when we can just make this an automatic thing, that as long as, you know, the PAC and the CDC are doing things toward the community, it'll be funded at some amount, I, I don't believe we'll get $33,000 a year, but.
We, well, this is based upon a 12-month series, we're not asking somebody to just jump up and say, you're going to be kind of loud just like that, that's not the question. The question is that we need the city to support some of the work that we're really doing in North Port San Joe, I mean, we're really working over there to bring things so we can prove that. Our job to start out with was to redevelop North Port San Joe, and that's what we're doing, but we also, and that redevelopment, we need the city to support what we're doing.
I think that the city has been doing a great job of supporting the PAC and everything that they've been trying to do, I just think that moving forward, we consider someone that's been there, and that was, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Ashbrook for mentioning that line item, because I, I didn't think about them on the lines, and that's why I'm saying, we can discuss some things, figure out how to move forward.
And I appreciate it, but see, John did not request this, we did for him because of the fact that, and when 2006, that was 2016, we established this right here, we didn't hide, we went to the city and to explain exactly what we were doing, and we have not, you know, died in our process at all, my, my, we're gaining momentum by reaching out to outside agencies in order to bring support to the city of Port San Joe, and I think it's proof to show how the University of Florida is coming in, family is coming in, Jesse Dupont is supporting, especially now with even with our food app, found out that some of the food effort that we were doing was in add with some of the elders, so we filed, filed a grant, we hadn't filed a grant for that, but, you know, we're getting support, we're doing something in the community that I, I think that the city, but highlight how good the city really is, not just North Port San Joe, but the city.
I had the same idea that Commissioner Ashbrook had regarding the outside agencies, like non-departmental line item on the budget, yeah, and, and, and I would say it was, was branch. And, and, and I would say it was, it was branch on to figure out what we want to fund and, and go from there. But I would like extra money coming through the next five years. I like that idea of Commissioner Hoffman.
Well, I agree with Pastor Davis saying, a lot of work has been done, and it's critical to continue to move forward. And Mr. Hendry has a lot of knowledge from what is taking place. Also agree that with Eric, that I think we may be getting off down in dollar amount.
Right.
Me being a negotiator, I'm going to try and lowball you today and try to lessen this much. But we have to agree that in the past, the PAC, or not the PAC, the CRA funded, I think it was twenty thousand.
Twenty years or forty thousand.
Yeah, so maybe that's the starting point, and we move forward from that. And I'm concerned that if we look at that non-departmental line item, that, and I'd want to hear from the attorney of Jim, on what are the guidelines? Because I, I looked into some of that today, and the ones that we're paying, none of them are over like eighty-five hundred.
Eight, eight thousand.
Yeah, most of them are, you know, three thousand, fifteen hundred, so there may be some rules that cap it at ten thousand. So I want to make sure when we move forward, we're doing it where we're not looked at like Lynn Haven City, like, you know, I want to do it properly. But I think it's important to figure out how to make this happen. To be honest with you, I'm tired of kicking it down the road, and I'm ready to get it done. And I think that maybe first step would be to approve what has been approved in the past few years, and see where, what Mr. Hendry responds, or he may be comfortable with starting that point. And then if the workload increases, then the compensation would increase.
Well, I almost said, I have to say this, but what we, I think we sometimes miss is the fact that when we brought the plan to the city, we brought the plan to the city for the city to approve. The city approved of what we were trying to do. It's an ongoing thing. We know that we've been short-stopped one time by what, Michael the Storm, at the end of the pandemic. Those things have kind of prohibited us from getting going forward as fast as we would like to do. But we also are in, in request upon from other entities that has said, hey, I like what you guys are doing. But we also are waiting here, because they sometimes say, well, what are the cities bringing to the table? And what we bring to the table, as North Port St. Joe is part of the city, is the fact that we're really going to do something to that area. That area right there stands out a lot, especially when you have storm problems and so forth and so on. Right now, we have land that's already developed over there that can be used. So we're trying to get people involved with, you know, using that land up for housing or whatever. So there's a lot of ongoing things that we're really trying to do that's going to be a benefit to the city. That's why it's important.
Thanks, sir. Okay, Mr. Gather, thank you.
I'm going to be in charge of gathering the area here. I've been talking with the Minister Alliance, or it's the Northern Minister Alliance, September Wood, Brother Jeffrey over here, and it's that, we've been trying to come together to have a day of prayer. And what we're trying to put together is that it will probably be done in football, you know, go try to involve Gulf County and the whole, you know, that's something we have to continue to say, north side, south side, you know, north in, south in. But this prayer is going to be universal, we try to work with the Minister Alliance, so we want, and we want to have a day, a day, really an hour or two of prayer, to put on, you know, to bring it to all the people that, the people, because as I said, our school board, you know, have your position, but if they don't, if, what we're talking about, if maybe you, the people, Washington, we don't help, we don't give a thing.
Sounds good. I had an excellent afternoon of prayer Sunday before last, that down by the lighthouse, that was well received, and I would say Eric, it was fairly well attended, it was a little drowsy rain, and, but I think more prayer is better. All right, emails? All right, move on to discussion items. Commissioner Ashbrook?
Actually got something for the board. If anyone still needs to do the required ethics training, there's two webinars, they're two hours apiece, ten AM tomorrow, and then ten AM the next Wednesday, where the city is doing a complimentary during the pandemic online, so go anywhere to do it. I'll get the information, Ms. Charlotte, if you want. That's all I have, Eric.
All right. Ms. Lawrence?
Um, I, this just came up, I've been thinking about it for a while. There's a tree right there at the corner of the post office. It's, it's one of those bigger crepe myrtles that it's leaned over into the, in the right of way over that, I believe it's over the sidewalk there, but whenever you turn, whenever you're looking to your left at that stop sign, just go by there and look at that. Gee, I mean, it, I, I think it's a safety issue there, and, I mean, it may need to be taken down, but whatever you guys think. Lastly, I just want to personally thank the public for allowing me to serve another two years on this board. Look forward to working with you guys. Thanks, sir.
First of all, I'd like to thank, um, hopefully, Ms. Lawrence, and good working with you guys. It's just something that's been on my mind about ditches. I think I mentioned a year and a half ago about having a crew to clean the ditches out throughout Port St. Joe year. I think that'd be three, I don't know, I'm, I'm not an expert in how many laborers and operators need to run something, but I don't think you need three or four employees to start a crew like that. It's just a suggestion that, that I've been thinking about, maybe you guys would think about, because during hurricane, I presented it, maintenance, you know, we don't need to wait till hurricane season, or enemy hurricane season, start digging, cleaning ditches out and doing certain things that we have to be prepared. So that's, that's, that's what's been on my mind about a crew that, there was nothing but that year. And I know it's hard to find, for you to be interviewing and trying to get people in, but, you know, just something to think about.
Yeah. The minute management is important.
Okay. Ms. Lawrence? Only thing I have is a thank you to allowing me to serve two more years. I heard David say, leaned over and Brent said, I voted for you, but I, you didn't say that to me. But I, I do appreciate it. I'm, I'm still sitting here, so thank you.
All right. All right, guys, the only thing I have is what I've been talking about for a while, and the CDC recommends three things I want everybody to think about. Sanitizing, mask, and six feet. Please, everybody, let's, let's set an example for, for everybody in town and, and Commissioner, I mean, Reverend Gathers and, and folks at Ministerial Alliance, I wish you guys would talk about that a little bit yourself, as well as the census, bringing up the census thing. So we can, we can spread the word, we can get it out, we can be safe, and we can move forward. So that's all I have, and thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you all for coming.